I think I'm in.
Yes, you are.
Finally. Just an hour late.
That's enough.
The YouTube stream is live. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. We're going to get started in just a moment here. Give our attendees time to come in and get situated. Good evening, everybody, once again. Thanks for joining us. We're going to get started in just a moment here.
You guys, do I have co-host status?
Yes. Okay, good evening, and thanks for joining us this morning. Looks like we're up and running. I'm going to hand it over to Mary Passaro to get things started.
Notice is hereby given that due to the novel coronavirus pandemic and recent executive orders issued by the governor, the town of Islip zoning board of appeals hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May 5, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. will be held electronically via Zoom webinar instead of an in-person public hearing and will be streamed live over the internet. At such time, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. Our first application is that of Victor Rosario and Victor Rosario. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of 4.8 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, east side of Martinstein Avenue, 166.66 feet south of Deer Park Street, Bay Shore.
Evening.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Rosario.
I thought he said, "Good evening."
That was me, sorry. I can't hear him either.
No, I don't have him as one of the attendees yet. We'll skip that one.
Second call.
Second call. Keith and Ann Winnicott. Is anybody here on that application? Yes, I see them as an attendee. Permission to leave in-ground pool having side yard of 13.5 feet instead of required 14 feet. Residence A-
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. We're here. I'm here.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
127 Brook Street, West Sable, New York.
How are you this evening?
Uh, pretty good. Pretty good. We're healthy, so that's good.
That's a good thing. I like to hear that.
How are you guys? Everybody good there?
Everyone's good. Everyone's good. So you're seeking permission to leave a in-ground pool having a side yard of 13.5 instead of required 14?
Right.
Seems de minimis, apparently they must have went off the fence or something to give you that extra half a foot on there.
Yeah, yeah. There was, there was a fence there, and then we put a new fence in, and I don't know, somehow the measurements got off of inches.
Problem. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
Excuse me?
Board of any questions? Just give one. Is the board of any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Take a motion?
Make a motion to grant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application granted. You have a good evening, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, bye.
Bye now. Application number 242-20 Mercy Manjari. Permission to leave pool patio on-side property line not having required setback of 6 feet and drive- Oh, sorry. Residence B District, west side of Richland Boulevard, 100 feet south of Cherokee Drive, Bay Shore.
Good evening. Is anyone here on Manjari 242-20? Second call, ma'am. Second call. You're muted, ma'am.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Mercy Manjari. I'm at 1368 Richland Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
You have a pool patio on the side property line, not having a required setback of 6 feet.
That's correct. When we bought that patio thing, we didn't know, and then they put it on. We realized after everything was done when we were applying for the, when the inspector came in, that's when we realized that it's right on the fence.
Okay. It seems like a small patio. Deidre from planning, any objections?
No objections. It's only a small amount of patio that's along the property line, so, and, yeah, it's a small amount, so no objection.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Board of any questions?
I'll take a motion. I'll make a motion to grant the application. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Application grant. You have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Hi. Application number 243-20 Joyce Smith. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of 3 feet instead of required 6 feet and driveway on-side property line not having required setback of 4 feet. Residence B District, east side of First Avenue, 840.47 feet south of Davis Street, Bayport. Are you here, Joyce? She's here.
Good evening, Joyce. Can you hear?
Hi, Joyce. You should be able to look at the, oh, she might have dropped off.
I just unmuted her. Joyce, are you here?
Hi, Joyce. You should have an unmute button at the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom window.
Can we see her? Is she, is she here?
She's there. Let's see. Joyce, if- If I believe Jay Smith is Joyce.
Yep. Smith, are you there? I think I hear. Good evening, Mr. Smith. Can you hear us?
Me now?
That's better. I can hear you. How are you?
Okay, for some reason I have to hold down the unmute button. I don't know why.
Oh, jeez. Thank you for your patience. We can hear you, though, so if we can get through this pretty quickly, if you can hold down that button, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
Name and address for the record, please.
Here's Joyce Smith, 437 First Avenue, Bayport, New York, 11705.
Great for your, here seeking permission to leave a pool patio having a side yard of 3 instead of 6 and a driveway on-side property line not having a setback of 4 feet. It appears the pool patio is just a small bump out. Someone's fall over, is there or not?
I think it's fine.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr.?
Yes, I can hear you.
The patio, pool patio is a small little bump out?
Yes.
And the driveway, it just comes in in a short portion, but it's on a property line, correct?
Yes, exactly. When I, when I had the work done, I was under the understanding that it was regulation. I actually, I was going by the papers, and they told me that it was regulation until I came to have the inspector, and the inspector said that it was not.
Okay. Seems de minimis for us. So does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Is the board of any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted. You have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Application number 244-20 Andrew Campbell and Christine Downs Campbell. Permission to leave shed 8 by 9.87 on front property line on a through lot. Not having required setback of 25 feet. Residence B District, east side of Islip Avenue, 76 feet north of Lemon Street, through lot to Branch Avenue, Islip.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Can you hear you?
Yes.
Name, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Andrew Campbell. My address is 18 Maple Street, Hopewell, New York, 11788.
How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you. And yourself?
Doing good, thank you. So you're on a through lot, you have a metal shed, appears about 8 by 10 approximately, on the line of the through lot.
Yes. So when we purchased the house, it came with the shed. I, and, yeah, that house was purchased in 2003, I believe. Lived there for many years, never had any issues, you know, use it the way you would use a normal shed. Until recently, we were informed by the town that it was actually not supposed to be there. It was on the survey when we bought the house, so we had no reason to believe that there was an issue with it.
Okay.
While, while the house is between two streets, it's all backyards basically on that street. And, you know, it would be a financial difficulty for us to move it at this time, so we're requesting if we can get an exception.
Okay, you are on a through lot there. Deidre from planning, do you have any objection? Planning of any objection?
No objections. It's a through lot, and it butts up against another street, so it's not hindering any neighbors or anything like that.
Okay. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board of any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion. Mr. Missene, I'll take a motion. Missene, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to grant, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I was unmuted, I'm sorry.
Application granted.
Thank you, guys, so much. Please stay safe.
You too.
You too. Thank you.
Application number 213-20 Mimi Canone. Permission to leave in-ground pool having side yard of 14.3 feet instead of required 18 feet and driveway on-side property line not having required setback of 4 feet. Residence AA District, 278 Cluster, east side of Spence Avenue, 1,435.69 feet north of Deerfield Court, Holtsville. Hi, Mimi.
Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Canone. Can you hear me?
Whose hand is up?
Are you here?
Hi, Mimi. If you're having trouble unmuting, try holding down your spacebar for a moment and talking. And Mimi, you can also look in the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom window. There should be an unmute button.
Mary, can you see her? Can you guys see her?
Yeah, she's in the waiting room.
I'm going to send her a quick chat message and just see if she's having any difficulty.
You've been permitted to speak, so I can get something on the device, thank you.
Yeah.
The microphone's moving up and down. She's definitely getting audio into her device. We're just having a hard time hearing it. I'm not sure what's going on.
Should we move on to the next one until, until she can figure it out and we can come back to her?
We can do that, or since it's in front of us, we could, I think it would be okay to note the specifics of the application. Side yard is 14.3. This is a cluster subdivision. As the board is aware, typically in a cluster subdivision, we bump down to the lower zoning district, so the requirement would be 14.
14.3, oh. Can we, can we proceed with this, or do we need Ms. Canone?
Mr. Chairman, this looks eminently grantable. I think we can probably proceed with this. Based on the record.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. Missene, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ms. Canone, if you can hear us, the application is granted, and we thank you for your time.
Application number 245-20 Hector Cuevas and Keddie Robles. Permission to leave deck having rear yard of 23.5 feet instead of required 25 feet. Residence A District, southwest corner of Spur Drive South and Illinois Avenue, Bay Shore.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Keddie Robles and Hector Cuevas, 792 Spur Drive South in Bay Shore.
How are you tonight?
Good, everything good. Thank God.
You're the best audio of any applicant so far this evening.
You win, you win the title, and that's it. Permission, permission to leave deck having a rear yard of 23.5 instead of 25. De minimis, assuming you may go away off a fence, house a little bit shifted on the property, that's okay. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. McCollough, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night. Application granted. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, too. Thanks.
Hold on, guys. I had promoted Keddie to panelist. Okay. Okay. Application number 246-20 Mario Vargas and Yaslin Ramirez. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-602. Residence A District, south side of Floyd Street, 572.59 feet east of Beck Court, Brentwood.
Good evening.
We get Mario?
Mario Vargas, can you hear us?
He's here. Just give me a second. Hi, Mario. Are you with us?
Yes. Hi, this is Yaslin Ramirez and Mario Vargas.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
Hello, we're doing great, thank you.
Just name and address for the record, please.
Yaslin Ramirez, Mario Vargas, 86 Floyd Street, Brentwood, New York, 11717.
Thank you very much. You're here seeking permission to establish an accessory apartment?
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, was just going to say that when we purchased the house, was already, the garage was already converted. We just didn't know it didn't have a CL.
Okay. It looks like driveway complies. Mary, everything's in order for the accessory apartment?
Yes, everything's in order. Yes, the apartment is relatively small, right? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Yaslin, the apartment is less than 500 square feet, right?
Yes.
Yes, and the driveway complies with engineering's requirements.
Great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. McCollough, I'll take a motion.
Motion, am I on?
You're on, buddy.
All right. Motion to grant the application for a period of three years.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application granted. We'll see you in three years.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Have a great night. Stay healthy.
Okay, everybody, I understand that the Rosario application has arrived. That's the first one on the calendar. Everybody, let's go back and hearing that one now. Application number 241-20 Victor Rosario and Victor Rosario. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of 4.8 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, east side of Martinstein Avenue, 166.66 feet south of Deer Park Street, Bay Shore.
Good evening, Mr. Rosario. Can you hear me?
Let's find them on the list.
Are they on?
I'm not. Let me see. Let's see. Okay, they should be now.
Mr. Rosario, can you hear us?
I can hear you, guys. Hello?
How are you?
Good to hear you, guys. Before we begin, let me just let the record reflect that I'm recusing myself from consideration of this application.
Okay. Mr. McCollough is recusing himself. Mr. Rosario, please name and address for the record.
Victor Rosario, 1156 Martinstein Avenue, Bay Shore.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. You have a brick patio around an in-ground pool, and a small portion of it is a little bit too close.
Yes, sir.
Seems de minimis. We see a lot of these every week. Does anyone wish to be heard on the application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir. Have a great night. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, you too.
Moving on to the application of Audrey Stone. I saw that she's present. 247-20 Audrey Stone. Permission to leave porch having side yard of 13.9 feet instead of required 14 feet and shed side yard of 1.2 feet instead of required 4 feet and not having 20 feet behind the front lawn of the Residence A District, east side of Drive, 555 feet south of Sniddergrave Avenue, West Islip.
Good evening.
I'm coming for you, Audrey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. We can hear you. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Can I have a name and address for the record, please?
Audrey Stone, 151 Anchorage Drive, West Islip, New York, 11795.
Thank you very much. You're here seeking permission to leave porch, 13.9 instead of 14, off by a little bit. And a shed having side yard 1.2 instead of 4 and not having 20 feet behind a front lawn dwelling. How long has that shed been?
The shed has been up about 12 years, and when I put it in, I called the town of Islip. At that time, the setback requirement from the front of the house to the back of the shed, if you can see what I mean by back of the shed, is by the gate.
Yep.
At that time, it was a 10-foot setback, and it's 10, front of the house to back of the shed is 10 feet, 9 inches.
Understood, understood.
The reason I could not do the forefoot off the fence is, I have a picture here. If I hold it up, will you be able to see my picture?
We can't see it, but I don't think you need to even hold that up. We see, we see these requests a lot, and the fact that it was built prior to the code change or right on the code change, I think we can take a vote and see if we can move on.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Application granted. Have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you so very much, all of you, too.
Thank you, Audrey. I'm not sure if I have anybody here on the next application of Anthony and Marion Engel.
Yes, we're here.
Oh, great. Okay. Application number 248-20 Anthony and Marion Engel. Permission to leave pool deck having side yard of 6.2 instead of required 10 feet. Residence A District, west side of Haven Avenue, 314.82 feet north of Springdale Drive, Ronconkuma.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony and Marion Engel, 118 Haven Avenue, Ronconkuma, New York, 11779.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. You seek permission to leave a pool deck having side of 6.2 instead of 10. How long has that pool deck been up?
15, 20 years.
Okay. Deidre from planning, any objection?
I just want to know, what is the approximate height of the pool deck?
Should I know that, or is it on the-
Just didn't know if you knew offhand.
You see it every day.
If you want.
No, give us an approximation if you don't know exactly. Is it up to your, your shoulder? Is it up to your waist? How high is it?
Oh, my waist.
And how, and how tall are you?
I'm about five foot eight.
Okay, I think that answers our question.
Okay, it's six, over 6 feet from the property line, so no objections.
All righty. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Application granted. Have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you so much. You too. Bye-bye.
Application number 249-20 Jamie and Richard Bogenschutz. Permission to erect one-story addition, 11 by 12 irregular, leaving side yard of 8 feet instead of required 14 feet. Residence A District, east side of Dale Drive, 517.8 feet south of Brook Street, Oakdale.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Richard and Jamie Bogenschutz, 20 Dale Drive in Oakdale.
How are you tonight, sir? It appears you're requesting a one-story addition. The house holds a smaller side yard than the addition you requested. Is that correct?
The house does. The house is closer to the side yard than the addition would be.
Planning no objection, Deidre?
No objections. It's already very close, and they're just putting it on top of an already there frame deck, so it seems more so, I guess, trying to be in line with the property, the property line, I mean.
And, Mr. Chairman, I note that the property line on the north is not parallel to the property line on the south. That's giving him a practical difficulty.
Right.
Well noted, thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard on this application? Does the board of any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir. Have a good night and stay safe. Can you hear me, sir? Mr. Bogenschutz? Is he gone? Sir, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
Yep, it's all, it's all good. You're approved, and have a great night. Stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Just really quick before we announce the next one, there is a open question on the Zoom chat about previous application, but I don't know if it occurred when we went over that application.
Oh, that was, that was the person who we never did hear, but we granted her application, right?
Yeah. But his chat was from three minutes ago, so I'm not sure if it was when we were discussing the application, so he might have missed it when we went over it.
Okay. Thank you.
Think we have to move on.
Yes, just give me one second. I'm just answering. Okay, the next application is application 250-20 Adam DeLeo and Lorraine Yurkins. Permission to erect second-story addition, 24.3 by 28.6, leaving side yards of 9.76 feet and 11.96 feet instead of required 14 feet each, total side yards of 21.72 feet instead of required 28 feet, and floor area ratio of 30.99% instead of permitted 25%. Addition resulting in new dwelling on lot having width of 50.01 feet instead of required 75 feet and lot area of 5,434 square feet instead of required 7,500 square feet and to leave driveway on-side property line not having required setback of 4 feet. Residence B District, east side of North Ocean Avenue, 383 feet south of Union Boulevard, Islip.
Good evening. We're here.
Hi, good evening, we're here.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Good, good, name and address for the record, please.
Adam DeLeo, 85 North Ocean Avenue, Islip, New York, 11751.
Great, so you're here seeking permission to erect the second-story addition. It appears some of your plans, you're going directly over the residence that's there now?
Correct.
You're not, you're not encroaching any further into the side yards?
No, we're going straight up on the existing structure.
Okay, of yours, with regards as you're seeking a floor ratio of 30.99 instead of 25, we normally go up to 30 from the code from 25%. Is there any precedent that you know of any area that is over 30?
Um, I believe so, I believe our next-door neighbor and the house in our, in our backyard, they're both second, they're both two-story dwellings and, you know, we're just, we're just looking to go up, create a little bit more room for ourselves.
Let me ask Deirdre from Planning, Deirdre, do we have any precedence in the area for anything above 30% that they are?
Yes, there's actually a lot of precedent, around 35, 31, as high as 38, so there's plenty of precedent for that.
All right. We have the, that's that new code, but the addition resulting in new dwelling, Planning has no objection to that, right, correct, Deirdre?
No objections, it's, there's also precedent for the side yards, but if they're just rebuilding and just going up, it's not anything different than what they already had.
Okay, and the driveway on side property line, you're planning, have an objection with that? It seems kind of small compared to less than half the property?
Yep, no objections.
All right, does anyone wish to be heard on this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, application granted, sir, have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you very much, you too, guys.
Take care.
Application number 251-20 Lucille Delise Catch, permission to erect one-story addition, approximately 11 by 12, leaving side yard of 7 feet instead of required 14 feet. Residence B District, south side of Home and Place, 122 feet east of Home and Avenue, Bay Shore. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
How are you tonight?
I'm excellent, thank you. For the record, my name is Hope Hillier, my address is Post Office Box 353, Sound Beach, New York, 11789. I'm here this evening representing the Catch family who reside in the dwelling at eight Home and Place.
No camera, Ms. Hillier?
I have my camera on and open, so I don't know why you can't see me. I can see all of you very clearly, it's nice to see you all.
Do we look handsome and pretty?
You do, as a matter of fact, every one of you. Chris is so relaxed, I like can't even get over it.
My, well, you know what it is, my office has turned into a nursery from my growing brood of children, so I'm doing this in my bedroom.
That is just so cool.
All right, well, I hope all's well on your end, I hope, and it appears, I'm looking in the file right now, it appears your clients have already had a ZBA approval, 673-19 for 7.9 instead of 14, is that correct?
That is correct, and when the architect properly plotted the addition that the board granted, they realized that the furthest, most point of the addition was going to have a side yard that was less than 7.9 feet. They calculated that the actual addition that they requested, that the board said okay to, would have a side yard of 7 feet instead of 7.9. So we're back before you this evening to see if we could ask you to consider granting a 7-foot side yard on this addition.
The, the dwelling already holds a 7.9?
Yes.
And the addition is going to be a little bit closer under one corner?
Um, the sidewall of the house is not parallel to the property line, so there is a practical difficulty inherent in putting a, an addition that would be.
Don't be using my terms of argument.
Yeah.
Yes, well, you did, and I was smiling, I love that.
Shows you how old I am.
We're in there together, I think I'm older, but anyway. So, if the board has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. The lot is large, the house was built all the way to one side, um, oh, hi, you're asking me to start my video, hi, everyone, there I am, hi.
Hi, there you are.
Hi. So, the house was built all the way to one side of a rather large lot in this area, um, it's very small, this part of Bay Shore, it's a small addition with, hopefully, an insignificant request.
All right, does Planning, Deirdre, Planning has no objection, I'm assuming?
Sorry, no objections.
Does anyone wish to be heard on this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, yeah, take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
Second.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, you have a great night, stay safe.
Thank you very much, stay well, stay healthy, everyone, bye.
You too.
Application number 252-20 Luis and Alicia Abreu, permission to install in-ground pool leaving side yard of 10 feet instead of required 14 feet and pool patio leaving side yard of 4 feet instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, East Side of Boulevard Avenue.
Why is there that echo? Hello?
Mr. Booth, it's so good to see you, I think Mr. Wexler missed you.
I'm on the Talon show, I don't know.
Good evening, name and address for the record, please.
Peter Booth, B-O-O-T-H, 5 Kirk Avenue, Ronconkuma, New York.
Right, you're, you're seeking permission for your applicant to install an in-ground pool inside of 14.
That's correct, he's, really can't move the pool closer to the house because we're only about 8 feet off now, we're moving another 4, and then we're, we're going to be encroaching and undermining, no, no good. The rear property line, the variance is not necessary, the variance is only required on the side yard of 6.10, I'm expecting the two or three neighbors, and I'm putting it through the board to give you an impression.
Deirdre, can we see the aerial, please?
So it's for, I believe, this corner house.
I see, and which, where's the corner, where's the pool going, if you could point them out with your cursor, please?
It'd be going right in here.
Okay, thank you.
That's in the southeast corner.
If I can ask a question, Mr. Chairman, do we have any precedent, Deirdre?
Um, there's no precedent.
How, how many feet, Mr. Booth, between the pool and the, in the house, if you, if we were to grant the side of 10?
That'd be 8, 8 feet right now.
How much, I didn't hear that.
8 feet. You have a little bit of room, wiggle room, could you shift it a tiny bit over?
I could probably, you know, a foot or two, I would say, two foot maximum.
So, if, if we, if we were to be okay with 12 instead of 14, would you be able to still do the pool that way?
That would be fine.
Any, any members of the board have anything to say regarding that?
That's a fine suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone wish to be heard on this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
No, 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 we.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'll make a motion that we deny the application, however granted, at a 12-foot instead of a 14-foot relaxation, thank you.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, the application granted as 12.
Just one comment to the board, Peter, are you still with us? Do you think if you shift the pool 2 feet, I think you said you have about 8 feet, if you shift it 2 feet, do we run the risk of you being within 6 foot of the dwelling, and if so, should we grant relief from that requirement, should it be necessary?
I would make the motion to grant the relief from that requirement if necessary.
I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, there was also a question on that application about the pool patio 4-foot instead of required 6.
It's granted, right? We didn't.
It's all granted, yep.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too.
This one as well. Application number 253-20 Neil Heaton Jr. and Maggie Emma, permission to install in-ground pool leaving side and rear yards of 14 feet instead of required 18 feet each and to leave 6-foot fence on second front property line not having required setback of 10 feet. Residence AA District, northeast corner of Union Street and Walnut Avenue, Bohemia.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm here with, with Emma, a corner piece of property, she's requesting 18 and 18, I know the board's feelings on granting.
I'm thinking of you.
I'm sorry, okay. On this situation here, the, there is a, an application that has been granted right around the corner, and they did grant a 14-foot, they had required, they had requested 18 and 18, but they were granted a 14, this was granted by this board back in, let me see, January 17, 2019.
I don't understand, they, they requested 18 and we granted them 14?
Yeah, the, the original, the application that I'm referring to that was approved in the area, they had applied for 18 and 18, but they were approved 14 and 18, um, by this board.
So 14 and 18, you're saying?
Yeah, 14 and 18, this was.
I had read that they requested 14 and 14 for side and rear, but the board had said at least one side should.
Right.
So they're granted only one, I believe, the side yard to have a 14 feet, and then the rear yard was asked to keep 18 because they had the room for it.
That would be in keeping with our usual operating procedure, to have one side comply.
Right. And that's the same situation with this one here, the one side wouldn't comply, the rear would comply for the 18, the side we're looking for 14.
So you can comply on the rear?
Yes.
So on the, on the east or east side, you can comply, you'll shift the pool over then, four more feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, any objection Planning with that?
No objection.
Does anyone wish to be heard on this application?
I, I think there's some comments in the Q and A, they're not related to this, though.
Not related to this, okay.
No. Um.
Does the board have any questions?
To me, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else in the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Now we have to.
As amended. Sorry.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Application granted as amended, Mr. Booth, have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Application number 278-20 Maria Sanchez, permission to establish accessory, accessory apartment pursuant to ISOP Town Code Section 68-602, to leave driveway having front yard occupancy of 40.88% instead of permitted 35%. To leave pond 11 by 14 located in front yard when only one, when only permitted in rear yard. Residence AA District, north side of Oklahoma Avenue, 100 feet west of Stein Drive, Bay Shore.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys, how are you?
Good, name and address for the record, please.
Roxanne Trela Dynamic Expediting with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconkuma, New York.
How are you tonight, Michelle?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, so you're here, you're, oh, good, you can take it, oh, good.
We're here to establish an accessory apartment, the apartment is 550 square feet. Hello?
Hello, we got you, yep, keep going.
Oh, okay, um, it is owner occupied and we're also here for the driveway, which has a front yard occupancy of 40.88. That we actually, which is up on the screen right now, we were able to reduce to about 37%, and as far as the pond is concerned, it's actually been removed.
Okay, great, so you're down, we, as you know, we give up to 40% for front yard occupancy, you came down to 37, the pond's removed, and everything else in order, Mary, for the accessory apartment application?
Yes, everything's in order.
Right, does anyone wish to be heard on this application? We, we, we have some questions in the queue, is, is, has everyone been checking out or not?
I've been.
Yeah.
But, we're good.
Good, okay, does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, yeah, I'll take a motion.
Motion, motion to grant the application.
For, for a period of three years?
For a period of three years, yes.
Oh, I'm on there, hi, guys.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application granted, Miss Trow, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure, so we're not overlooking it, the three questions in the question, Q and A are all from Bob Baldwin, is that correct? And I've answered all three of them.
Right, about the Cason application, right?
Right, so.
Okay, yes, I see that they're answered, it's in the next tab.
Okay, I just dismissed them, so we should be.
Okay, thank you.
Application number 279-20 Malin Lanis, permission to leave roof over patio 13.9 by 19.25, having side yard of 8.5 feet instead of required 14 feet, roof over creating floor area ratio of 25.7% instead of permitted 25%. To establish accessory apartment pursuant to ISOP Town Code Section 68-602, to leave driveway on side property line not having required setback of 4 feet and having width of 11 feet instead of required 18 feet. Residence B District, south side of Perry Street, 550 feet west of Lincoln Avenue, Frontland.
Good evening.
Good evening again.
Name and address for the record, please.
Roxanne Trela Dynamic Expediting with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconkuma, New York.
How are you again?
Uh, we're looking to establish an accessory apartment, it is 577 square feet, it's owner occupied, we are here for the driveway, but the property owner actually repaired the driveway, he moved it 4 feet off the property line and he widened the width of it from 11 to 18 feet.
Okay.
And then brings us to the roof over patio, which has a side yard of 8.5 instead of 14, and that roof over creates an FAR of 25.7 instead of the required 25%. I did submit some pictures earlier today, just showing that the roof over patio does above the neighbor's backyard and the neighbor's house is well over 20 feet from the actual property, the rear property line, so it's not close to any structures or the house.
And your variance isn't that great on that, that part of the application, right?
Right.
Is there any precedent in the area for the side yard?
There's actually one precedent from 2017 that had a side yard of 4.8, but all I can find is, is the decision, so I'm not sure if there's special circumstances or anything like that, but it was granted with a side yard of 4.8.
All right. Never to be enclosed, Miss Trow?
Never to be enclosed.
Does the board have any questions from Miss Trow? Does anyone wish to be heard on this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, yeah, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application for a period of three years.
Second.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application granted, have a great night, stay safe.
Hi, Roxanne.
Hi, Roxanne.
Lothar?
Second, oops, I'm on the wrong list.
I have to take a little break, is everyone okay with that? I'll be back in five minutes.
Yeah, we'll still have a call, we're fine.
Okay.
Application number 254-20 Victor and Doris Ayala, permission to leave second-story deck having rear yard of 24 feet with landing having rear yard of 19 feet instead of required 25 feet each, to leave shed having side yard of 1 foot instead of required 2 feet and having 6 feet behind the front line of the dwelling and. Having six feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet. And to leave patio having side yard of one point five feet and rear yard of three feet instead of required four feet each. Residence B district north side of Junard Drive, sixty two feet east of Ohio Avenue, Bay Shore.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Bjornby, Architect of Record from EAB Architectural Designs, forty two fifty Veterans Highway, Holbrook, New York, one one seven four one.
How are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing fine.
Good, 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 I'll give you the floor.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
I'm, I hear you, yep.
Yep, so good, you can proceed with the application.
Okay. So the, the application here is for three separate items. Number one is they put in a small deck seventy two square feet. That is seeking a one, one foot relaxation from the rear yard. And then there's stairs from that deck that go down that which is, we seek, seeking a six foot relaxation. It's a, it's a high range dwelling, so the main dwelling area, living area is on the second floor. So they just created a small deck with a small table and chairs that goes down to the, to the backyard. So that's the, the first item, the second item is on the, the side of the house where that shed, that's a ten by twenty, one hundred and twenty square foot shed. That is one, one foot closer to the side yard than permitted. And it's six feet, it's just pushed back a little bit behind the fence. Again, as a high ranch, the, the property and the slope of the land comes up. So it's kind of dropped down a little bit, it's, it's visible from the front, but, but it's, I don't think it really affects any of the neighbors.
When was that, that shed erected, do you know?
I don't know, it's, it's vinyl and it's covered, it has some, some moss on it, so it looks like it's been there for quite a while.
Was it, was it prior to the code change when the code allowed ten feet instead of twenty?
I, well, let's identify a year for that.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I can't say, it's, it's just, in the pictures that we provided, you can see that it looks like it's been there for a long time.
I found that it was in a two thousand thirteen aerial, but not in a two thousand ten aerial, so it was sometime in between those dates.
And when is the effective date of the ordinance change?
Um, Mary, was that two thousand eleven?
I think maybe twelve.
Okay.
So either way, we can't determine from the aerials.
Right.
And, and the owner did not.
Say again, I'm sorry.
And the owner did not recall the exact date of when they put that in.
Well, if, if, if there's no proof that it was there prior to the code change, it's gonna have to be set, pushed back a little bit. Did you hear me with that?
Okay, the, the owner was willing to push it back if, if needed to be, yes, when, how much, how much would it have to be pushed back?
Maybe have to be twenty feet behind the front line of the dwelling.
Okay, i- if it needs to get pushed back twenty feet, they'll, they'll accommodate for that.
Okay. And you're also, patio, side yard of one five and rear three instead of four feet each, we see that a lot, that's, is it cement or, according to the picture, it looks like cement.
Yeah, it's just a walkway that was around, there was a pool there at one point that's been taken down and it's just remaining from there. So at some point, they want to put another pool back, so they did like to maintain it.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
I just have a question, just to make sure when we get this right, the shed has to be set back twenty, but it can, can it have the side yard of one instead of two?
I have no objections to that.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Uh, Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we deny that portion of the application. Or variance for the shed having six feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of the required twenty feet. And to grant the balance of the application.
Second.
All in favor? Great, have a great night, Eric, thank you, stay safe. Can he hear me still or has he gone?
I changed him back to attendee, so I may have muted him.
Well, tell him he said have a good night.
Oh, here we go. Application number two fifty five dash twenty J and G Home Solutions LLC. Permission to leave one story roofed area having side yard of one foot instead of required fourteen feet. And cellar entrance having side yard of five feet instead of the permitted encroachment setback of eight feet. Residential redevelopment district, east side of Peters Boulevard, one hundred and thirty eight point nine one feet south of Potters Boulevard, Central Islip.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear, can you have an address for the record please?
Good evening, uh, Mr.
I feel your pain, man.
Bob Scalfo, four oh four Montauk Highway, West Islip, New York, one one seven nine five.
How are you tonight, sir?
I'm good, hope you guys are.
You're here seeking permission for one side roofed over area having side of one instead of fourteen, let's start with that.
Now, the, the roof over the staircase has been moved back, I submitted some new photos. It's back at the beginning of the staircase, so that's, I guess it's five foot back now, so the one foot has been changed.
So you, you guess it's five foot or it is five foot back?
Says here, having a side yard of five instead of the permitted encroachment setback at eight foot. So the stairs, I guess, is the encroachment at eight feet. I believe that area is about five foot, it doesn't say on the survey.
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it, the application reads one instead of fourteen, one foot instead of fourteen. Is there one foot from the property line?
The roofed over. The roofed over area has been. Cut back.
So what is the existing distance?
It's over the staircase, they cut it back to the beginning of the staircase.
But no, we need, we need. Feet and inches.
Five feet, is it eight feet, is it ten feet?
Yeah, we have a survey that doesn't reveal anything.
The seller side, the seller entrance itself has a side yard of five, that's in the call of the meeting. And I think what.
Right.
The applicant is trying to tell us is that dotted area that formerly had one foot has been pulled back so that it is only the staircase.
Understood, understood, however.
Five feet, in other words, Ms. Passaro.
Right, so I imagine you could amend the call of the meeting if you wanted to.
I believe that's correct.
So would you like to, you requesting to amend the call of the meeting, sir?
Well, what would be the best way to do that? To amend it?
I'm not here to give you advice, but if it's already cut back to five instead of four and you're asking for five instead of four instead of, instead of fourteen, instead of one instead of fourteen. You may want to amend it.
Do that, do we have to be on the calendar again for that?
Now, we can make it, I, I make a motion to amend the call of the meeting to read permission to leave one story roofed over area having side yard of five foot instead of required fourteen foot.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, so the call is amended now, but you're still asking for five instead of fourteen, that's. Well over fifty percent, as we know, for a roofed over patio, it did it from planning, do we have any precedence for side yards of five, roofed over areas five instead of fourteen?
No, I wasn't able to find any precedent.
Okay, how about the cellar entrance having five instead of eight?
No precedent for that either.
And what's your, what's planning's position on the cellar entrance?
Objections to the cellar entrance itself, five instead of eight, but the, the roofed over area, five instead of fourteen, that's a very big relief being asked.
Mr. Scalfo, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Well, if they were to remove the roof completely.
You're in much better shape according to planning's.
I mean, I know the idea of the roof is to cover the staircase and I know there's drainage on the bottom there at the entrance level into the basement. But if that's what it takes, then that's what we'll do.
So you're, what you're stating is, for the record, your, your client's willing to remove the roofed over area?
Yes.
Okay.
This was a foreclosure J and G picked up, it had multiple violations which was cleared. The house has been completely renovated, they're in contract, so if that's. Something that will relieve the situation in removing the roof in its entirety, I believe they would do so.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Do we have Mr. Nicole back, I can't see him?
Yes, am I not on?
Oh, you're on now.
You're on.
Alright, Mr. Cole, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm sorry, I, I guess I was cutting out, why does, why don't you throw the motion to someone else?
Alright, Mr. Messina, take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we grant the application as amended. With respect to everything except for the roofed area having one, one five feet now instead of fourteen feet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're moving the roofed over and keeping the cellar entrance?
Okay.
Correct, alright?
Sounds good.
Have a great night, sir, stay safe, thank you.
Take care.
Application number two fifty seven dash twenty Valerie and Robert Sparks. Permission to leave raised dwelling having first floor height of twelve point eight feet instead of permitted nine feet. Residence A district northeast corner of Hollywood Drive and Hollywood Drive, Oakdale.
Good evening. Is, uh, Mr. Mr. Sparks, anyone there?
Yes, there's a delay. Um, waiting to join, we're here.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, name and address for the record please. Mr. Sparks, if you can speak more into the microphone or closer, we can barely hear you. Okay, we, we heard Mrs. Sparks much more clear than you, I don't know if.
I'm a zoom expert, hold on.
We can hear you loud and clear. Am I the only one that can't hear Mr. Sparks?
No, you're, you're right, Mr. Chairman, I, I have the same issue.
Let's get the teacher on here.
Valerie Sparks, one nineteen Hollywood Drive, Oakdale.
There we go, how are you tonight?
Very good.
Good, how are you?
Good, so you're here seeking permission to leave raised dwelling having first floor height of twelve eight instead of permitted nine?
Yes.
So you give us a little background on. What you're requesting, it appears in the pictures, it's already raised and.
Yes, we, this is, uh. What the house had auctioned a few years ago, requirement that it be raised. We raised the house and the original proposal, we were gonna add a second floor to the residence. But, uh, but halfway through, ran out of money. So decided not to do the second floor and just keep it at the raised height that it was elevated to. And that's what we're gonna do, we're just gonna keep it as the one floor. As, uh. As it was raised, I think I submitted photos that shows it as it actually sits today.
So you, you, in reality, you just enclosed, you just lifted it up and enclosed the raised portion on the bottom. Which is a two story dwelling, you're saying?
It's a two story dwelling, but only the first floor is gonna be used as living space. And when we did it, it said, I consulted a couple architects and they both said the same thing, they said, yes, you can do it, it's gonna require a variance. But the, the ground floor, it's never gonna be able to be used for living space, it's just gonna be storage space. It said with the money, I was okay with that at that point, going forward.
So you're. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, maybe somebody can explain what's going, I don't follow the application, is it a one floor, two floor?
First floor, I believe first floor with twelve point eight feet of height instead of permitted nine feet.
Right, so I, I, I believe what Mr. Sparks was doing was, when he raised a home, instead of putting two stories up on the raised level, he just enclosed the. I guess you wanna call it the raised portion of the, from the ground floor up, instead of raising it as a two story dwelling, he just has a, pretty much a, a basic two story dwelling now, not. Raised much, if that's the right terminology.
Do we have any photographs of what the first floor actually looks like?
I do, I don't know if you can see this.
There, we can see that, Mr. Chairman.
I can't, but I'll, I'll rely on your representation.
You can't, you can't see that, Mr. Wechsler?
No, uh, yeah, hang on, let's see.
Yeah.
Oh, now I can, I'm sorry.
There you go, yeah.
So he raised, and let me, let me get you to show you what it looked like prior to him raising it, it was this. Can you see that?
Yeah, I can see it, I, I thought that the, the comment was that the first floor, let me just see the after photograph, that one. I thought the comment was that the first floor. Couldn't be used or wasn't being used, it was only storage?
It can't be used because it has to meet the base flood elevation, which I, I wasn't able to do, but I knew that when we did it. And it wasn't.
I don't follow that though, it looks like a regular two story home with windows, I mean, how could that not be used, I don't understand that.
Well, Mr. Wechsler, I think that it couldn't be used if he were to keep the raised dwelling and add the other story on top, is that correct, Mr. Sparks?
Correct, if, if you see in the photograph from the, the top of the, the new foundation wall, just under those windows.
Yep, right, right here, right here.
Feet, yes, and it's about three feet of concrete wall. In order to meet the base flood elevation, if I put a first floor down there, the first floor would have to be at that level of the current concrete foundation. Which it, it can't do, so I wasn't able to do it.
So I'm, I'm sorry, what does that first floor, I'm looking at four windows, bow windows type of affair, what is that used for?
It's gonna be storage, unfinished storage space.
You're gonna use the whole first floor's unfinished storage space?
Yes.
Do we have photographs of what the interior looked like, it just doesn't seem to. Make sense. That you're gonna use the whole bottom floor as storage space? And is there any actual practical difficulty for using it other than that some code or regulation says you can't? I don't understand it. What's the height of the ceiling, floor, ceiling, two floor, floor to ceiling of the first floor?
From the floor to the ceiling is approximately eight feet, except under the steel beams that support the house.
Well, do you have any photographs of what it looks like?
It's just, uh, I don't have any photos.
No, I asked you if you had any photographs.
Not, I do not.
I, can I ask either a question, Mr. Wechsler, from planning? David, what, what is, I, I understand what the applicant was trying to accomplish and couldn't. But what's the difference of, of him just building a two story dwelling here on this lot? Why, why couldn't, I, I know he was trying to raise it, is, is there a reason why this house, the way it fits now, could not be used as. A two story, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm asking you.
I'm not too sure either, I think legally they just can't be lower than the base flood elevation, they need to be raised because, let me see. In this arrow, you can see they kind of back up against a bunch of wetlands, this is their house here.
Okay.
So it's.
And when we raised the house, we actually pulled it ten feet forward, the wetland.
Right, but it's still very close and there's not like, there's a barrier there, so they do need to, but they weren't able to get the first floor to the level it needs to be to legally be livable.
So in other words, there's a practical matter, you really couldn't use that first floor because it's gonna flood, right?
Right, if there's a big storm, it could flood, yeah. But I'm not sure where.
Well, it almost definitely will flood, I mean, it's right on.
You know, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that I, I, A, maybe like to see some photographs and maybe an inspection and sometime and. photographs and maybe an inspection and sometime and see what the notes of the inspectors say. I just find it hard to believe that you'll have an entire first floor with eight-foot ceilings and just, uh, just leave it for storage. I, I, it just doesn't seem to work for me.
I don't, I really don't have any other choice what I can use it for.
Well, why not?
What Mr. Wexler's saying is you could leave it open if you chose. I think what Mr. Wexler's saying is that you could leave it open if you chose.
I can leave it open too.
I, I know, but I'm, here's my, my query. I, uh, somebody could come in, not you, but somebody could come in and say, I'm only gonna use it for storage, and then not use it for storage, and what will we be doing? And so I wanna see what it looks like. And I, I, it's hard without photographs or without some sort of inspection report to have a full understanding.
Bill, I think that, Bill, I think that, or Mr. Wexler, I believe that if that were the case, there would be an enforcement issue with the town and we would depend on the neighbors in Oakdale to actually inform us because they probably frequently do.
Yeah, but I, you know, that's then we go into a town enforcement thing and before we even have to get there, who knows? And then how does the town get to look inside and getting search warrants? We all know that issue. I, I, I'm.
That's true.
I would like to see what it looks like.
I, I have, I have one more quick que, I agree with what you're saying, uh, Mr. Wexler. I just have one more quick question, which, and I'm just having a hard time understanding it. If the applicant were to just leave the home the way it was, it would be illegal because it's now?
If we were to leave, if we left the house the way we bought it, New York State required us to raise the first floor to the base, two feet above base flood elevation.
They required you to do that on, on the purchase of it?
Yes. So we had to raise it through the purchase of it.
Okay, and what, and once you raised it, you realized at that point you couldn't?
Couldn't afford to put the actual proposed second floor. Once we raised it, we were gonna put a first floor at that raised height, add a second floor to it, and that was it. Can't afford to do the second floor, so we just kept it as it, as it was when they raised it.
Can I make a, a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? Uh, I would like to reserve on this and, and get a better grasp. As I said, maybe with photographs and ideally with some sort of inspection down the road, so we know what we're opining.
Mr. Wexler, could I just make a, a quick comment? Hurricane season is approaching. Construction is shut down. When it opens up, there's gonna be a backlog. I wanna make sure that these, this family is able to actually lift their house prior to, um, hurricane season.
Well, the house is already lifted.
It's already lifted.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, oh, permission to leave. I, all right, then, yeah.
Chris, Chris, this is the, this is it right now.
It looks good.
Yeah, but.
And it's actually about four feet lower than was proposed.
And I think what Mr. Wexler's concerned is that it's gonna get used for living space and not storage space.
Oh, of course it is.
So, Mr. Sp, no, not of course it is.
We can't assume it's gonna be used.
Concerned.
We, we can't assume it's gonna be used for living space.
And get a better grip on what's going on.
Okay, I'll, I'll support that motion, Mr. Wexler.
I can, I can live with that.
Alrighty, um, does, uh, Deirdre, anything from planning?
Um, no, I guess I would recommend the same thing, reserve, just look a bit, little bit more into it.
Can I, can I have a moment to just ask, what, what are you asking of us? What, what do you need to, to for us to provide that this is, it's not livable space?
Well, Ms. Sparks, Ms. Sparks, according to the pictures that you, you sent in, um, there, there are multiple windows. It, it appears to be possibly down the road, you'd use for living space. It doesn't, doesn't appear to be a structure that is just gonna be used for storage in the bottom. So I guess the, the board would like some time to review. We, we're, we're kind of in a position right now, as we're on a Zoom chat. They wanna review, um, all aspects of it to see if they feel comfortable with.
Now, wouldn't that be, I mean, that would be the same thing as saying somebody proposes to build a house with an unfinished basement that's not livable, and you deny it because you say, well, you could finish it one day and not tell us.
Well, that, that house wouldn't, that house wouldn't require a variance.
But, but it, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that these windows, what, what some of the board members are saying is this looks like it's finished.
Those windows are hitting the floor, so there's no mold.
Well, we'd like to see.
Are they, are they openable?
Yes, and they, the windows were put in for aesthetic reasons.
Why would they be openable if they, if it wasn't gonna be occupiable space?
I don't know that you, they, why would I buy windows that you couldn't open for ventilation or access?
Can I just, can I just ask a question? We wanna find out, is there electricity in that area? Is there heating? Uh, there's lighting?
All right, so would you be opposed if, if we sent somebody out from the?
No, that's fine. They can come out. Like I said, I might even have pictures.
And that'll, that'll solve, I, I suspect that'll answer all the questions, and then we can, uh, give you a proper determination, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
You won't have, you won't have to come back.
Okay.
All right, do you understand that, sir?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone wish to be heard in this?
We really appreciate that.
Yep, thank you very much. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reserve decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're allowing a post-hearing submission, right?
We're allowing a post-hearing submission for, uh, an inspection, correct?
Yeah.
And are we allowing them to submit photographs or no, of the living space?
If they wish, they could submit photographs as well.
App, applicant. Mr. and Mrs. Sparks, if you wanna submit us photographs of the current condition, you know, showing that it's unfinished, not living space, you know, no electricity, that would not hurt you as long as photographs.
And, and we're sending a town personnel out there too to confirm that. So if you wanna just rely on the town person's pictures, you can do that as well. I suspect that that's gonna answer all of our questions very quickly.
All right, and then is there any kind of timeframe for that?
We have sixty-two days by state law to, to determine, render a decision. However, we're gonna move as quick as we possibly can. We have to get, um, you know, someone out there.
A report.
Report.
And don't forget, it takes that person some time to create a report, so soon, hopefully.
Yeah, we'll put it on the first agenda we can.
All right, and then I guess, are you, I'll get notified by mail or phone or?
Yes.
Yes, sir, by mail.
But we reserve to.
Yes, we reserve decision.
We reserve decision.
So it doesn't have to be on another public hearing?
Yeah.
No, we just have to issue a decision at a public.
Okay.
Alrighty.
All right.
You, have a great, now just stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Application number one sixty-six dash twenty Haroon Durani, adjourned from February twenty-five, twenty twenty. Permission to leave one-story addition sixteen point four by twenty-five point eight, having floor area ratio of thirty-one point seven nine percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. To leave four-foot fence within both corner and driveway site triangles and to relocate shed to property line, not having required setback of four feet. Residence B District, Northeast corner of Beverly Street and Webster Road, Islip.
Good evening. Haroon Durani can.
Hi, who are you? Can you guys hear me?
On camera.
We can hear you, yes, we do.
Hi, yes, uh, this is, um, my name is Aisha and I'm representing my brother Haroon, wait, his, okay. Sorry, my parrot is in the way.
I've never heard that before.
I was gonna say, that's the first one, my parrots.
As long as I've done this, I've never heard that before. Who knows for you?
Um, yeah, so I'm representing my brother, uh, Haroon Durani. My first name is Aisha, last name is Hanam, address is seven Beverly Street, Islip, New York, one one seven five one. Um, I actually had, I think we had met last time before, and, um, my question only was that we are moving the shed as it is from, um, it has to be moved because it's too close to, you know, the, I guess, the neighbor's property. But also, um, the front end, I was told that I have to move the, uh, fence because it is too close, but I measured it and it's um, fourteen, no, sorry, four feet away from the, um,
Street?
The, uh, the road and twelve feet away from the corner of the house. So is it still valid or is it still not?
You're in, you're in the side distance triangle, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's, go ahead, Mr. Wexler, uh, Mr. Messina, you can.
No, no, please, I apologize.
No, no, no. He, he, what, what Mr. Messina is saying is that you, you're, you're still in the side distance triangle, um, the way it's measured, um, and the fence is blocking the side distance triangle from the corner of Webster and also from the driveway onto Beverly Street.
Okay.
Can you, can you, can you see this? See the two yellow highlighted corners?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's the problem.
So how far, how far is it supposed to be from there?
Well, it can't be in those two yellow triangles, those, those, those marked triangles, the fence can't be in there. It has to be prior to that.
No, like I'm saying, how many feet?
Uh, that's not something I can answer for you. I don't, I don't, um, you'd have to speak with someone there. Well, I think maybe, I remember this correctly, last time, were you supposed to deal with planning and see what you could do? Have you, did you meet with them?
Uh, we spoke, we met. Um, there was a side triangle that you needed to be back thirty feet from each corner here, so anything past this line here, this all need to be taken out.
And I think her question is how far back is that, right, ma'am?
Well, yeah, right, so this is thirty feet back, then thirty feet across, connecting those points. Anything within that triangle needs to be taken out. And then on the other side, it's, I believe, twenty feet across Beverly and then eighteen feet in towards your property, connect the two endpoints. Anything within the triangle needed to be taken out.
So thirty feet this way, thirty feet that way.
Corner.
And thirty feet that way and meeting the corner.
Hmm. And then eighteen along the driveway.
Okay. I think we're just probably gonna get rid of the, of fence part because that's basically blocking the whole front for the kids.
Right.
There's not much of a front yard for the kids to play in. So if that's gonna be, I, because I was measuring it and I saw that it's actually twelve feet away from the corner and I have a stop sign there too. Um, so it's, it's gonna be that much. I mean, it's kinda like blocked because I have a little, um, I can't draw on here, but right between the yellows where you have, uh, right in there, I actually have a little, um, like a, um, a center thing with, um, you know, like a tree and everything, so that would be in the way because of course I can't have two edges and then, you know, like, um, a center of the fence, it, it will look just really weird for the front of the house. So I might as well just get rid of the fence of the house and then the kids can just play in the backyard, I guess.
Or you can lower it to three feet.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm trying with the whole COVID and everything's happening. I've already been home as it is for two and a half months, it is, as it is without income, so I'd rather limit myself from spending as, um, I've already done so much.
We understand, but that's an op, it's an option for you in the future if you choose to pursue it.
Okay.
Okay.
We also have, um, the, the floor area ratio of thirty-one seven nine instead of twenty-five.
Yes, that's something that I wanted to speak with, something in the zoning to find out, um, uh, because I was told that it's possible that the way my surveyor had done my survey, that it could have been in between thirty or less. So.
We're not, we're not licensed surveyors, so we just go off of what is submitted. So if you,
Yeah.
if you wanted to get another cer, an amended survey to show that it's possibly less than that, then we can go for that, but we have to go with that survey you submitted, um.
I don't think the issue would be the exterior, which would show on the survey. I think the potential hope thing to have is that the interior might result in an FAR thirty or under. So, um, we've kind of gone over this already. I think that in cases like this before where there's hope that the interior might provide you the FAR, the board would just deny a submitted and grant no higher than thirty.
Okay.
Is there any, is there, I'm assuming there's no precedent, uh, or above thirty in the area?
No, the only precedent is for thirty.
Sorry, your waist is really breaking.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Deirdre, I didn't hear you.
Your waist was.
Um, the only precedent was for thirty point six. That was the highest that was granted.
Um, are you gonna relocate the shed, you said, correct?
Yes, yes, that's definitely that. I mean, it's too close to, you know, the neighbor's property, so that's definitely something that, uh, we were gonna do it, you know, be during this time, but with this whole COVID happening, no, no one is about to work right now, so they're saying stuff is gonna start opening May fifteenth, so my plan is, you know, right around then, I wanna get the shed moved.
All right, so um, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think perhaps, uh, since the applicant has demonstrated a willingness essentially to comply on everything, uh, with the exception of the FAR, um, perhaps we should reserve decision that'll allow her some time to address some of those issues on her own. Perhaps obviate the need for a decision from us.
Sure. Um, and do you, do you understand what, uh, Mr. Messina was saying? We can, we can reserve decision, um, which gives us sixty-two days by law to review, um, and see what we can do and then render your decision at that point?
Sure.
Are, are you, uh, how, how, what, what compelled you to make this application?
Well, the reason, because we didn't, when we originally bought the house, we had no idea, um, you know, the things that were with, going on with this house. And, um, till the point someone from the town actually came, um, when none of us was on the property, and I guess they went around our property.
So you got summonses, right?
So after that, they, um, said that, um, that you can have this.
I'll, I'll say it again. So you've got summonses, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this'll help you get a little time for relief from that as well, okay?
Okay.
As long as your case is pending here, uh, they, they can prosecute, so, um, you know, we're trying to help you. I suggest you, uh, sharpen your pencil and go in with a professional and address the FAR issue with the building department as soon as you can.
Cause I just wanna get a.
Doesn't cost you anything.
Yeah, cause originally when we did the survey, the whole house was kinda, I don't know why, um, my brother decided to do a survey at that point. The whole house was kinda like a disaster from inside out and everything, so now, um, the house looks in a very better condition than what, you know, it was originally, even from exterior and interior. So now I wanna have someone professional come and actually do the survey properly, so we get a better idea.
Again, and, and Mr. Sarah's point was well taken before, is, it's not the survey that you need. You need someone to do the interior calculation for you and sit down with the building department and show them that you're not really at thirty point, thirty-one point seven nine percent, maybe you're at thirty percent.
Okay.
And that's a big difference for us, anyway.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
Uh, I just note that, um, the applicant, him, your brother Aisha is apparently here. Haroon, if you can hear us, did you wanna be heard? I'm trying to unmute him.
All right, well, he, he can, I'm sorry, I'm assuming he can speak with his sister and. Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, there you go. He's online.
Yes. How are you tonight?
Good, thanks. I'm sorry, I'm not in, uh, town. I'm just away, uh, right now. I was traveling. And basically, I, I, I was traveling overseas and, uh, I'm kind of stuck over here, um, because there are no flights, so, um, I think my sister's taking care of everything and I just joined in. So basically I heard, uh, what he have, um, told, oh, that'll be good and so we will be getting things done. Actually, it was in the process because of, uh, COVID nineteen, things pretty much stopped in the middle. So hopefully as soon as, uh, things will resume back to work, we'll be to conclude everything.
Yes, that's fine. Yes, that's fine. I I don't, I'm I'm sure you you hear, we're we're gonna reserve decision. We have sixty-two days by law to render a decision at that point and, um, give you guys some extra time to get what you need done before the decision's rendered.
So what's, what's the, what's the step we need to take as of now, if there's any recommendation?
You need to sit down, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Messina, go, go ahead, please. Um, you need to sit down with, uh, a set of interior plans and the building department and really take a hard look at what, uh, the the interior of your building to see that the F A R was calculated correctly. Ms. Saro is correct that oftentimes, when, uh, you know, you sit down with someone who's very familiar with the code, you can find that certain things were counted that maybe should not have been. And that reduction, you don't need much here, you need about two percent, uh, makes all the difference in the world to us. Okay?
That'd be good.
Alright, does anyone else wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we deny so much the application.
Now, we're, we're reserving.
Oh, we're reserving everything?
Yes.
Okay, then that's puts a different light on it. Then I make a motion that we reserve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, guys. We'll, you'll be hearing from us, uh, within days. Okay, stay safe.
Thank you.
Alright.
Perfect, thank you. Be safe. Bye bye.
Alright, guys.
Last one of the evening, huh?
Application number two fifty-eight dash twenty, Valentina Sprinkman. Permission to reconstruct attached garage leaving side yard of three point nine feet instead of permitted fourteen feet. Total side yards of nineteen point five feet instead of required twenty-eight feet. To leave driveway having side yard of two feet and patio on side property line instead of required four feet each. Residence B District, north side of West Avenue, eight hundred and thirty-three point seven feet south of Montalk Highway, West Sable.
Hello?
Evening. Good evening, how are you?
Good, everyone?
Oh, I just lost you. You there?
Just promoted him to panelist.
Can everybody hear what, hear me?
I can, I can, Mary, I still see the last applicant's name in my, uh, queue here, is that?
Nope, I'll, I'll get rid of, I'll do that right now.
How are you tonight, sir?
I I'm okay. I just, I hope we can keep getting through. Oh wait, my video's coming back. Here we go, okay. There I am.
Hey, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Valentina Sprinkman, forty-three West Avenue, West Sable, one-one-seven-nine-six.
How are you tonight?
Great, how are you folks?
Good, good, thanks. So you're seeking permission to reconstruct an attached garage. I'm assuming, um, the attached garage was the one that was, uh, CO'd properly on the property, is that correct?
Um, you know, I'm I'm not a professional at this, but that, the the garage was put on, uh, as far as I know, around nineteen, in the late forties. It was an old chicken coop that was dragged over from a farm up the street. Uh, and it's been there ever since. It's a flat roof. And it was built, um, you know, like on a rubble foundation, on grade. And I'm having, go ahead.
Are you looking just to just replace what was there in kind?
Uh, essentially, it's gonna be the same footprint.
Not essentially, what it, what is essentially?
Well, what I would like to do, it's a.
That's not yet.
No, it's just the same footprint. It's a flat roof existing. What I'd like to do is replace it with a pitched roof.
Okay, and what is to the, uh, it would be, I guess, the north of you. Yeah.
To the north of me, yeah, to the north of me is my next door neighbor. Um, both of my neighbors to the north side and the south side have expressed support for what we're doing because.
Even though if you put a pitched roof on, the runoff is gonna go on their property, cause you're awfully.
No, well, the the pitch would run, the the ridge would run north-south.
Yeah, okay, I see.
It's gonna, it's gonna run off.
Alright, I got you. Gotcha. I got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to grant the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir. Have a great night, stay safe.
Thanks, everyone. Be great. Thank you.
Well, it looks like we, uh, Mike, can I speak freely or no? Am I not allowed? Hang on, we we have one that was a marked second call, Mary, that didn't show up. There's nobody here for that, right?
Uh, they did show, didn't they?
Yeah, they show, we, we. We had two that I thought we marked second call, you know? I only thought we had one, but I could be wrong.
Uh, there was somebody who wasn't showing, but we knew she was in the background, so we, we decided it and.
Alright, good enough. As long as, I just wanna make sure we tend to everything.
You know, her representative did become president, was in the queue and in her answer.
Excellent, thank you. That went pretty well. That went well.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you all for, uh, helping out. I can't wait to get back into, I I'm never gonna say this again, but I can't wait to get back. I'm haping this and I'm gonna play it back to you every time you complain.
Gentlemen, we're still, according to my screen, we're still live on YouTube, so.
Oh.
That's, that's fine.
Don't think I have any more work for you either.
Stop that stream.